Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. There we go. On behalf of Forsyth County Schools Board of Education, I would like to welcome everybody to this special occasion as we officially swear in our newly-elected board members. Today, we celebrate democracy, service, and a shared commitment to the unparalleled success of every student in the Forsyth County School District. We want to congratulate right out of the gate before we get going. Let's get this party warmed up. Congratulate and welcome our newly-elected board members. Stand when I call your name. Chris Grimes, Tricia Hoyes, and Dorian Usherwood. Welcome. At this time, I also want to introduce our veteran board members. Current Vice Chair, Mike Valdez, and now the grand old man of the board, Mr. Wes McCall. I'm going to turn it over to you, Wes.
All right. Well, good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a wonderful opportunity to be here tonight and to witness these three individuals that are just great people, hardworking, and they are the perfect community leaders for this role. And so, we're here to recognize them. We're going to watch them take their oath of four years of community service. This isn't quarter-pointed community service. This is... You volunteered for this. For the record. You set up for these four years of community service. So, thank you for that. Before we do, we want to recognize two groups, though. First one is our elected officials that are with us in this room tonight. And I see a few of them. I see Alfred John, who is our Commissioner Chair, newly-appointed. Mindy Moore is here. Elect. Mindy Moore's already been a... She's already been an official. So, she's... And then District One, the best district in the county, is Kerry Hill.
You know her, Wes. You know her.
I know, Kerry Hill. I just talked to her on the phone the other day. And then, are we missing anybody else?
Laura.
Oh, Laura Samson's in the front back here. Yeah, great. So, all the commissioners. This is great. Thank you for being here and supporting. I know that Ms. Daisy Weeks is here. She's the judge. She's elected. Anybody else?
Heather Dunn.
Heather Dunn. Is she's elected position? No, she's appointed. Anybody else are we missing? All right. So, the second group we want to recognize is the reason why we are here. And that is because of the staff, the perfect school system that we have here. We are so grateful for each one of you. And so, if you would, please, stand to be recognized for all your help, your leadership, for what you do for our schools. Thank you. This is our why. Our leaders, we have full confidence and faith in you, and we're so grateful for each one of you. And the great thing about the new three board members is that we all, five of us, share the same why and why we are here. So, at that time, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Valdez.
Well, thank you. Well, first, I want to say thank you to all the staff that's here. I know you guys have had a long day. You've been working all day, hopefully. And we appreciate you guys being here. This... You don't see this in other school systems. I have the dull task of sometimes watching other school board meetings. And you don't see this. You don't see the unity and the family that we have here in this county. So, thank you all very much. I know it means a lot to the new members to see all of you guys here. And I know that they reciprocate that support for you guys. So, thank you all for being here. We want to recognize another group that is arguably the most important group behind anyone who takes on public service, and that's the family. We don't make a whole lot of money. I'll put it out there and tell you, we make, you know, a few hundred dollars a month as board members. So, the rumors that we're becoming fat cats off of this are not true. Just so you know. We do this because we love the kids, we believe in the mission, and our heart is in it. And we spend a lot of time away from home and a lot of times dealing with hard things. We've had a hard few weeks here in this county. And it's the family that steps up and fills in the gap, husbands and wives that step up and fill in the gap. And it's that shoulder to lean on when you get home after a hard day. And we deal with some hard stuff. But the good news is, we deal with a lot more good stuff. So, if you're family of one of the new board members, can you please stand up? And at this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Jeff Jackson of First Redeemer Church to lead us in the invocation. If you're able to stand, please do so.
Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we are grateful for this extraordinary Board of Education. And we're thankful for these new leaders that you have elevated to such an important place of authority in our county. We pray that you would prosper the work of their hands. Father, we're also grateful for the passion that has driven them to serve the extraordinary students of our county in the coming years. Lord, we pray that you would help them to have the wisdom, the insight, and the courage to make decisions that are right. We ask that you would have your hand of protection on their lives and on the lives of their families. Would help them to be constantly aware of your persistent presence with them. Lord, we pray for the next years that your will would be done, that you would give them great insight and wisdom to do the things that you would want to see done. Lord, we pray that you would use these leaders to help our county continue to flourish, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. Dr. Dugan, I'm going off-script here just a little, changing the order up. Where is she? She looks shocked, I'm sure. All right. Mr. Chris Grimes, if you'll come down to the front. Chris Grimes has been a resident of Forsyth since 2000, and he and his wife, Leslie, have four children. Chris holds a bachelor's degree in business administration at the University of North Georgia and a master's degree in public safety administration from Columbus State University. He's a proud graduate of Leadership Forsyth and participated in youth leadership Forsyth as a high schooler. He was honored with the Charles F. Welch Citizenship Award by the Forsyth County Chamber of Commerce. Chris has worked as a deputy sheriff, Forsyth County EMA Director, and 911 Director. He has over 15 years of experience in public safety and previously served as a school safety manager for Forsyth County Schools. And much like his predecessor, this is a Forsyth or Forsythian through and through. And we're really excited to have Chris come up. So, the Honorable Judge Daisy Weeks Marisco will come to the front, please, and swear in Mr. Grimes.
First, I will administer your official oath of a member of the Board of Education. Do you, Christopher Grimes, a citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Forsyth and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge all the duties required of you by law as a member of the Board of Education of Forsyth County to the best of your ability? Do you further swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state, and that you've met the residency requirements of this office? So, help you God.
I do.
Okay? And now, I will administer your loyalty oath. Do you, Christopher Grimes, a citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Forsyth County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? So, help you God.
I do.
Right. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome to the family.
Congratulations, guys. We'll take good care of him. All right, Mr. Grimes. Mr. McCall is going to pin you. Apparently, it is a verb, pin, for the teachers in the room.
Maybe. There we go.
Don't cut him.
No, no, we got it. No bleeding. It's a good thing you know to stop the bleed. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay. At this time, would Ms. Tricia Hoyes please come to the front?
Who? Ms. Tricia Hoyes, please come to the front. Tricia holds a bachelor's degree in elementary and special education and a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. She served as an elementary teacher and earned her reading endorsement along with becoming a National Board Certified Teacher. She was an educator for 15 years, with her last two years being in Forsyth County Schools. Tricia and her husband Scotty have lived in Forsyth for 11 years. She's a proud parent who serves on her son's elementary local school council. A few years after having their first son, Tricia made the decision to step out of the classroom to offer more flexibility and time with her family. She then began a career in real estate. In 2018, Tricia and her husband decided to give back to the community through their service as a foster family. Would the Honorable Judge Heather N. Dunn please step forward and swear in Mrs. Tricia Hoyes?
I will begin with your official oath as a member. So, if you'll raise your right hand. All right. Do you, Tricia Hoyes, a citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Forsyth County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge all of the duties required of you by law as a member of the Board of Education of Forsyth County to the best of your ability? And do you further swear or affirm that you are not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you are not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you are otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and that you will support the Constitution of the United States of this state, and that you have met the residency requirements of this office? So, help you God. I do. All right. This will be your loyalty oath. Do you, Tricia Hoyes, a citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Forsyth County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? So, help you God. I do. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
Tricia, Mr. Valdez is going to pin you.
This is a little more complicated here. You're going to have to give me some guidance. This is kind of the typical positioning here. I don't want to break your dress. Can you do it? I am not buying any dress. Okay. You just hold on to that.
Congratulations.
It's bad luck. You've got to pin yourself.
He's got to push hard, Mike. Push through.
There we go. Very good. And last up, Mr. Dorian Usherwood, if you would come to the front. Mr. Usherwood has 29 years of professional industry experience, including consulting, big data, fintech, agency operations, creative strategy, brand development, and technology, and more. Dorian comes from a family of educators and has taught Sunday School for over 10 years. He has previously served on an international school and athletic board. He and his wife of 20 years, Robin, have two children, one Forsyth County School graduate who is attending college and one currently enrolled here in Forsyth. After living and traveling throughout Europe for 20 years, they are proud to return to Forsyth and call it home once again. They did this in 2021. Well, welcome home, Mr. Usherwood. Welcome to the board. And this time, if Judge Daisy Weeks Marisco would please come back to the front and administer the oath.
If you'll raise your hand, this is your official oath. Do you, Dorian A. Usherwood, a citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Forsyth and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you will truly and faithfully discharge all the duties required of you by law as a member of the Board of Education of Forsyth County to the best of your ability? Do you further swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, nor of either of the several states, nor of any foreign state, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state, and that you have met the residency requirements of this office? So, help you God. And for your loyalty oath, do you, Dorian A. Usherwood, a citizen of the state of Georgia and being an employee of Forsyth County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? So, help you God. All right. Congratulations.
You did say "I do," right?
All right. Thank you.
So, Mr. Valdez has asked for another opportunity to pen. And so, Mr. Valdez was going to pin you.
Ow. Sorry about that.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations, guys. Welcome. Welcome to the big...
Welcome to the team, guys.
Platform in the sky, yeah. So, I just want to say how excited we truly are. And when I say "we," I represent, obviously, district staff, represent our principals, our admin, our teachers. But we're all excited. One of the great things in education is every semester, you get a fresh start. This coincides with the fresh start that we have this semester. As we go on in the spring, it's just exciting. I'm not sure what are the ways to say it. It's exciting. One of the things you're going to hear me say a lot, particularly as we retreat in the next few days, is something our principals and our district staff hear a lot. And that's what I implore them, particularly when they're new principals. But I think it goes for all of us in the Forsyth County family, is we've got to remember three things. We've got to remember to trust our people. So, as you look out there, obviously, the entire community is your people. But these are the people that get it done for us, you know? So, trust your people. We've got to earn your trust. And this crew is committed to doing just that, to working hard to earn your trust and being transparent and answering questions. And the best way you can learn those things is to get out there in the schools, in our departments. And I'm certain that that trust will happen quickly. Trust your people. The second part is work the process. Our strategic plan is really our driving process. We have school improvement plans. We have department plans. We've got processes for all the things that happen in this county. It doesn't happen just because we have great kids. Though our great families and great kids and great community make it a lot easier for us to go to work every day. And we're grateful for that. But it's very intentional. And I think that's something we've got to continue. So, as we learn to trust our people and work our processes, the third thing I tell them is to make sure to stick together. And I think that's one thing that I've learned in a short time up here in this seat is you'll have folks come at you that don't have all the information, but they're fired up and they're passionate because we deal with two things that are important to them, their children and their money. And so, when they come at you with their passions and sometimes we've got logic that guides us, we've just got to stick together, you know? And so, when you trust your people and you work your process, you're able to stick together. And I think that really, long before I got here, is what's made the Forsyth County School Board of Education Governance Team so effective. And so, I'm just excited for us to carry that on. Gentlemen?
I think that I've said everything I needed earlier, so...
Oh, man.
Pass it on to you.
That was easy. Well, congratulations, guys. It's been a long year, right? I think people don't remember that campaigning basically starts like in January of the year. So, you guys have basically had a baby. Nine months of... Nine months, and the baby's finally here, guys. Welcome. I'm excited for you guys. I really am. I believe in all three of you. Anybody who knows me even a little bit knows that I don't really see the world through the lens of race. But I'd be remiss to not mention that Dorian is going to be the first black American ever elected to office in Forsyth County. Or is. And I know you don't see the world that way. We're very similar in that sense. But it'd be a mistake to not acknowledge it. I'm the first Hispanic ever elected to office, in case anybody was wondering. So, everybody asking for DEI, you got it, guys. Each... Sorry, I couldn't resist, guys. You'll see, you'll come to find out that we've all become good friends and we've gotten to know each other very well. What I'll say to you guys, and I actually learned this from you, Mr. Young, campaigning is poetry, but governance is prose. And campaigning, you do and say things because you're campaigning and you're in the moment. But here, we've got to move slow. And one thing I'll tell you is, all the principals in this room, you may not know all of them yet, but you know us and I believe you trust us, and we trust them. We trust them implicitly. So, I just encourage you, you know, seek first to understand, listen. Like Mitch said, people don't have all the information. And it's not their fault. They just don't have access to it until someone gives it to them. I'm excited for the unique nature of each of you and the unique things that each of you are bringing. And Mitch kind of touched on those. But most importantly, I'm excited for you guys because I know for a fact that your heart is in the right place and you're here for the right reasons. And I know you care about kids. And I know you care about the people in this room. So, I'm excited. I think there's big things ahead. We have big challenges. We're dealing with difficult moments in public education. But I think this is the board that's going to take on the big issues and be bold and not make big changes because our system is not broken and we're not trying to fix it. And that's the pledge we made to all these principals in this room when we hired Mr. Young. And I hope that you guys would consider that in your decision-making, that our system is not broken. And this is the premier school system in the state of Georgia. And not only is it a privilege, but it's an honor to sit up here. So, welcome. Get ready. The party's just starting. And that's that.
And I'm nervous to say this, but would you guys like to take the mic for anything? I don't want to put you on the spot.
Your turn.
This was not in Michelle's script. And we do have a meeting at 5:30.
Go ahead, Mr. Grimes.
I just want to say thank you. You know, my family's here. So, you know, I graduated from South High. My wife graduated from North. And so, you know, we... I was telling somebody the other day that I thought this is kind of a full-circle moment for me. When I was in high school, I was on the superintendent's advisory council. And so, you know, for me, I...
And say it. Now, you're my boss.
Yeah.
How the tables have turned.
It's a different advisory now. But, you know, this is a great place to be. My family's here. Leslie, some of you don't know Leslie. My four kids, mom and dad are here. My mother and father-in-law are here. And you know, and this is what we've said is this is not just one, this is something the whole family's involved in. So, I just want to say thank you to all of you in the room who I've known for a long time. Some of you in the room were teachers of mine in high school. And then, one person in the back that wants to hide in the back, but who's been one of the biggest mentors to me is Bruce Wagar. Some of you remember Bruce when my days at school safety. And so, you know, this is really a special moment for me.
I would just like to say thank you so much to my family who's here. And I have a little one out there. And I'm sure you've heard another one down here in the front. But also, there's so many other friends and people who helped me get to this position that are here. So, I just want you to know I have a lot of gratitude for you and everyone who has helped and all the principals who I already know who have welcomed me during the campaign season as I wanted to learn about the schools. And I look forward to getting to know all of you more.
Thank you to my family. My kids wanted me to pay them to go door knocking. But then, they wanted me to buy them stuff, so... I'm really humbled and grateful that our pastor is here. Thank you so much, both of you, for being here. Because when I sat in your office and we prayed about this, you prayed for God's will to be done. And this is God's will. And so, that's the temperament that I'm taking into this great responsibility, that God is my ultimate constituent and that's who I am faithful to first and foremost. And I'm thankful that he's allowed me to have this opportunity to serve the wonderful people of Forsyth County. My wife and I, putting our kids in public school after being in private their whole schooling, both here and abroad, was something my wife basically told me I had to do. And I'm so thankful that we did because being in the schools and I hope... Is Aaron still here? Let me tell you, you spent some time in West Forsyth when my son was there. And when I first started volunteering in the front office, there was a "copy mom" box. And I said, "Well, what about the 'copy dad' box?" And the next time I came, there was a "copy dad" box. And so, I would encourage selfishly, dads, get in the schools. And because being in the schools, for all parents and guardians, being in the schools, that's where you see the difference and you see the heart of these wonderful servants that are standing in the gap for our kids every single day, selflessly. And so, I'm glad to be a part of this governance team with all of you. And thank you, Mike, for reminding us that there's not a large paycheck coming. They did not disclose that beforehand, but...
Make sure Robin knows because she might think you have another job now.
She did, yes. I saw some websites with things in the card already. So, thank you so much, everyone, for this opportunity.
So, we've got a tight window now, but we're going to invite everybody to the lobby. We've got some music and refreshments. We've got some music and refreshments. Board members get lots of pictures and hugs and handshakes in. But y'all, we're back in here at 5:30 for our first called meeting. Yeah. Yep, let's do it. Thank you, everybody.